We will start by observing a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Mrs. Fleming, would you take your role, please?
Nicole Cohen, here. Archie Anne Allion. John Maston.
Here.
Kathy Cox, here. Lisa Ramon.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the first meeting of 2020. Is there a call to the public? Okay. We have several visitors to recognize. And we are going to start with our Tri-State Youth Internship and Leadership led by Ann Marie Ward. If you have any additional guests, would you please introduce yourselves? Yes. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Aspire and members of the board. I'd like to actually introduce first Dr. Ziri, who is the founder of the program, and give him an opportunity to give a little history.
On the program. Thank you. There it is. Before I get into the nuts and bolts on it.
First of all, thank you for invitation. Where is Marsha? I want to see her. Okay. She told me I only five or 10 minutes, 15 minutes. Usually it takes me warm up for, you know, five minutes. So my name is Wajizeri. I moved in Bullhead in 1995 from New York. I trained in internal medicine in NYU. And for 25 years, I live in Bullhead. I have four kids who grew up in Bullhead. They did the high school from Mahvi High School. One, he is doing a neurosurgery residency right now in fourth year. And one, he is in medical school in third year. One, she is a pharmacist. And one, she is RN. All from Mahvi High School. So I started this organization called Tri-State Youth Internship and Leadership, which is a nonprofit organization. The concept of this organization is community helping the community. There is no funding, no grant. Nothing. We just started on our own last year. I went to the community, I talked with the businesses. And I say, please help our youth. You are making money and it has to come back to community. So we, last year, we got 45 businesses in Bullhead who signed letter of intent. We did 35 internship. And we graduated 25 intern. Is age 16 to 25. And from June 1st to July 15. And it's like four hours a day and they pay for minimum wage. They will get credit at the high school, which we are getting in Bullhead. And they're also going to get credit at the college. This year, we are trying to expand with your blessing in Lake Havasu and in Kingman. So we already get some like 10 people, businesses in Lake Havasu and 10 in Bullhead, in Kingman. And we are almost going to be 60 in Bullhead. More people sign in for all businesses. So we are planning to 80 paid internship in all Mahvi County. And Mary going to talk about what is the importance of internship and how we're going to affect our youth. Our community is a win-win situation for the kids, for the parents, and for the community. Last year, when we did 25 internship, six of our intern, they already hired by the people, by the businesses where they did the internship. So if you have any question, we can answer. I have some brochure and some form. And we'll be here. And if you have any contact, and Mary will give you the name and number. And we have a Facebook page. We have a website. And now Mary is going to talk about that.
Wonderful. So I'll go through some of the nuts and bolts. As Dr. Ziri mentioned, the goal of this program was to bridge the gap for our youth ages 16 to 25, where we were seeing them leave our communities. They were going somewhere else to get a job or going away for college. And often, they didn't return. And we were losing a lot of our intellectual capital. And many of our students didn't realize how many opportunities were in our cities right here in Mahvi County. So this concept of reaching out to our youth and saying, hey, there's all of these businesses that are in fields that you are potentially interested in. Come and do a paid internship. The paid part always gets them excited. $12 an hour. You'll work four hours a day for six weeks during the summer. And as he mentioned, it was very successful the first year. We had six of those students hired by the businesses they worked at. And so we're keeping our own intellectual capital in our communities. And we're giving our youth a chance to see where they want to go before they invest thousands and thousands of dollars in education and maybe don't end up with a job or don't come back to our communities. And we know that there are so many areas that we could use the great knowledge and to see our youth stay here. So I'm going to give you a few of the nuts and bolts of what you can do. And hopefully with the board's blessing, we'll see Lake Havasu come onboard with us. We are accepting applications from students. And we're also working with Mahvi Community College, starting February 24th. So students can apply. They can outline what their interests would be. The deadline for those is March 31st. And then we will announce who is accepted into the program on April 15th. We already have 10 guaranteed spots here in Lake Havasu. And that is from businesses who have stepped up and said, hey, I am ready to take one of these students for six weeks, starting June 1st to July 15th. We'll have three with Dr. Atassi, two at Premier Health, two at Southwest Behavioral, two at the hospital, one at hospice of Havasu. You'll notice these are pretty heavy in the medical industry, which we desperately need in our rural communities. And thanks to Dr. Ziri, he's actually the chief of staff at one of the hospitals in Bullhead City. So you get some more of those relationships. If you know of a business that would like to host a student, we need those businesses. We also need the students to go to them. So it is, as I mentioned, 120 hours, six weeks. We will be providing them with an orientation and we'll do it in every city. As Dr. Ziri mentioned, we have Kingman onboard. We'll have it in Bullhead City again. And then here in Lake Havasu. And that orientation will be not just for students, but for mentors. Part of my role with the program is helping to write a curriculum for leadership. And then if you see Gina in the back and you happen to know her, she's another brain trust for this group. And what we do is we really give these students a push of, here's what you need to know in the career world. Basic skills, how to dress, how to show up, how to put your phone away. And then, right? That one's a tough one. And then leadership skills. Because we want these youths to be the next leaders in our community. And then ultimately, hopefully, in our nation. So they'll go through that orientation and training. And then they'll get started in June. There's a big graduation ceremony that'll be at the end of July, July 30th. And last year, that was a huge success. And this year, we're hoping to see that again. And with your partnership and with the blessing of the board, we hope to see many of your students and the school involved and pushing them our direction. Dr. Ziri mentioned we'd already met with the superintendent and with Marsha. And they're excited about this. We're excited to partner with you on this. If, if there's any questions, we have brochures. We would like to invite you this week, if you can make it up to Bullhead City, to a lunch. And this is all about what the program is doing. It's going to be a lunch and learn about our community collaboration on this program. It is at the hospital there, Western Arizona Regional Medical Center, 11:30 to 1 this Thursday. So bit of short notice, but if you can make it up, come join us. Thank you for your time this evening. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do you do vocational also?
Absolutely. So in Bullhead City, we had a lot of vocational opportunities. So if you know someone here, we'd love to bring it in. And we do try to match the students. If we don't have a business signed up, but we have a student with an interest, we'll try to seek a business out as well. But if you can help us front load it, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
A question about the leadership. It seems everything that we are sending our kids to has to do with leadership. And I'm just wondering if it's lost on the students that, you know, you don't start life out as a leader. You know, you have to work your way up. So I wonder if there's, you know, if you're speaking to that, that when you start out in the working world, you are at the bottom. You're not part of the leadership. So I'm just curious about that because you mentioned teaching them leadership skills. And this is an entry level for most kids.
And you're right. And that's one of the things. We had a planning session a few weeks ago, in fact, almost a month ago now. And when we talked about that leadership component and then basic skills, one of the interfaces, of course, is leadership begins by not saying anything, really. It's by showing up early and leaving late. It's by performing. And so those pieces that we teach them, those basic skills are the foundation of who they become as leaders. Because it's by example. And so as we build that, those are components we take into consideration. And we're always happy to hear ideas.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Any further questions from the board?
I have one more surprise. But this is for our leadership. So are we able to give credit, school credit? And how does that work? Sorry.
That's okay. Actually, yes. And Mrs. Becker can address this a little bit more if you have further questions. But we had, we did bring back to the board, as you recall, when we brought our CTE, the 120 hours for the internship program. And so part of that was in anticipation of the opportunities. Because the hours that we had in there were far exceeded what most businesses were willing to pay for paid internships. And so for our students, if they in fact complete the 120 hours and meet the criteria for our course description for some of credit, they will get credit for it.
Thank you for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for invitation. It's exactly 16. Thank you.
Okay. Our next visitors, you may have noticed that it's kind of a packed house today. We have a lot of families in the audience. And we wanted to recognize some people in our district who have done a huge accomplishment. These are our new National Board Certified Teachers. We have a number of them to recognize today. And so I'm going to let Mrs. Vesta DeGolpe over.
Madam President and Governing Board, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce you to Lake Havasu Unified School District's newest National Board Certified Teachers. Since 2002, LHUSD has supported in one way or another, teachers who are seeking National Board Certification. National Board Standards and Certification were designed in 1987 to recognize and develop the accomplished practice of highly effective teachers. National Board Certification is voluntary and is available for 25 different certificate areas. And 125 teachers across the United States have achieved the designation. That is roughly 3% of teachers. As of today, 28 LHUSD teachers have achieved certification. 22 are still with us. Our newest NBCTs are committed to continuing the work to meet the needs of their students, maintain strong content and pedagogical knowledge, and to support other teachers. National Board is one way LHUSD develops and retains accomplished teachers. I'd like to introduce you to our newest NBCTs. Rachel Nutt. Rachel Nutt is an Early Childhood Generalist. She teaches kindergarten at Starline Elementary. She has taught for nine years, eight within LHUSD. Rachel has stated the process made her much more reflective in the teaching practices she uses. And she is looking for opportunity to better her knowledge about the age group she teaches. Melissa Waller. Melissa Waller is an Early Childhood Generalist. She teaches kindergarten at Starline Elementary. She's taught for 18 years, 12 of which has been in LHUSD. Melissa says her next step is helping others go through the process. She receives so much support during the journey, she wants to pay it forward for others. She wants to continue to use what she knows are best practices for her students and to give them the best start possible. That is a dream kindergarten team. Jackie Murphy. Jackie Murphy is also an Early Childhood Generalist. She teaches second grade at Jamaica Elementary. She's taught for 10 years, eight being in LHUSD. Jackie stated the process allowed her to see so much of herself, more than just an educator, but that she's a leader. The process was not easy. And in order to be successful, she had to reach out to people she looked up to in our district. This allowed her to realize that she was not different from them. They helped her see that she possessed skills and knowledge that she didn't realize that she had. It has changed how she looked at what she does in the classroom and how she views herself. It has made her much more confident to collaborate and share her expertise with her school and our district. Jamie Toonaman. Jamie is a Middle Childhood Generalist. She teaches fourth grade math at Jamaica. And she's taught for all 10 years in LHUSD. She's an LHHS alum. The NBCT process not only helped her get to know her students and their needs, but also helped her get to know herself as an educator and allowed her to grow and strengthen her teaching practice. Jessica Skavuzo. Jessica Skavuzo's area of certification is Early/Middle Childhood Literacy, Reading Language Arts. She teaches fourth grade at Smoke Tree. She's been teaching here at LHUSD for all 10 years. She is also an LHHS alum. Jessica states that National Board has made her more cognizant that she needs to take the community, family, and all aspects of a child's life into perspective. Tanya Gray. Tanya Gray's area of certification is English Language Arts, Adolescent and Young Adulthood. She teaches Education Professions in Dual Enrollment, English 101 and 102. She's taught for 26 years, 22 of which have been in LHUSD. Tanya says the process gave her the most powerful leadership tool possible, her own example. It inspired her to collaborate. She realizes now, no matter how effective she is in her single classroom, the point is that collaboration inspires everyone to be better. She needs to bring others along with her as she learns. Chesa Frye. Chesa Frye's area of certification is AYA Biology. She currently teaches Chemistry and AP Biology. She's taught for 18 years, 13 have been in LHUSD. She will use what she has learned to support and help other teachers in their practice by using the language of the core propositions. Common planning time, PLCs, and articulation time are opportunities for her team to be more reflective in how and why they make the choices they do to impact student learning. Marie Henry. Marie Henry's area of certification is Career and Technical Education, Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood. She currently teaches the Child Development Associate Program and is the Little Knights Preschool Director. She's taught for 32 years, 14 of which have been at LHUSD. She is also an LHHS alum. Marie plans on serving others now that she's become board certified. She states, "I attended the candidate support provider training this past Saturday. I had a strong support system of NBCT supporting me while I worked on my certification. I want to pay it forward for others who are pursuing National Board. This was one of the most difficult, challenging, and rewarding professional endeavors for me. I strongly believe in how it has changed my way of thinking about my students and really getting to know them. I want to share that with other teachers." The work LHUSD has accomplished in working with National Board teachers and bringing an accomplished, effective teacher in every classroom does not happen without the hard work of others. Current NBCTs work as coaches and mentors for candidates. Coaching and mentoring for candidates is led by the following teachers who we'd also like to recognize. Marsha Becker. Marsha Becker, certified in 2009 and 2018 in EAYA Physical Education. This is her 21st year teaching, all in LHUSD. Supporting candidates has been one way she gives back to those who mentored her through the process of pursuing National Board. Courtney Zampona. Courtney Zampona's area of certification is Early and Middle Childhood in Literacy Reading. She's taught for eight years, all at LHUSD. She loves supporting candidates. She sees the impact our teachers have on their students and the profession and likes that she's been able to help them reflect and grow their practice. Christina Musselman. Christina Musselman's area of certification is Early and Middle Childhood Literacy, Reading Language Arts. She teaches first grade at Starline. She's taught for LHUSD for 16 years. She was Denise Miners' Student Teacher at Ora Grande. She's also an LHHS alum. When talking about the impact of supporting National Board candidates, she says, "The impact of supporting candidates in LHUSD is hard to put into words. It's amazing to see how far our district has come in regards to National Board. We've had 28 NBCT certify and 22 are still here. Providing support to our homegrown teachers is impacting our community of learners, our schools, and our cultures. The support we provide has gone from one CSP to several CSPs, to having to drive to Phoenix to get to support, to having coaching Saturdays at ASU Havasu. It's gratifying knowing how much heart and soul from multiple stakeholders went into developing a culture of accomplished teaching." And finally, Kristy Olson. Kristy Olson is a Middle Childhood Generalist who's certified in 2002 and 2012. She's taught for 28 years, all at LHUSD. Kristy says the impact of supporting candidates over the years has resulted in collective responsibility. Board certified teachers and candidates have the mindset that we are all responsible for creating a system where all students are successful, regardless of their school, grade, subject area. NBCTs are a team of individuals who share the belief that through our unified efforts, we can overcome challenges and produce intended results. We would also like to thank the Governing Board and administrators for their support. And acknowledge the support of the K-12 Foundation. Monica Hall's here. Nawal's here. The K-12 Foundation has supported candidates and the support of the community in recognizing the importance of accomplished teaching in LHUSD. Because of your support, our district has been identified as an accomplished district. We are the first and only in Arizona at this time. The press release from National Board for Professional Teaching Standards states, "The National Board for Professional Teaching Standards announced today that 11 school districts have been named National Board Accomplished School Districts for their investment of resources to support advancing quality teaching through National Board Certification. These districts join 81 accomplished districts designated earlier this year in their efforts to encourage teachers to be their best and to effectively drive student learning. Each of these districts have taken extraordinary steps to impact student learning through National Board Certification. Their commitment through financial resources and dedication to creative programming is having an impact on teachers and students. And I'm proud to recognize that work," said Peggy Birkins, an NBCT and the president and CEO of National Board. About Arizona, she added, "Lake Havasu Unified School District has integrated the five core propositions of National Board Certification into all aspects of professional practice. The district understands the value of accomplished teaching and supports teachers to be their best through a career-long trajectory of professional learning and accomplished teaching." Madam President and Governing Board, thank you for allowing us to acknowledge the work of our teachers that they're doing to improve teaching and learning in classrooms.
Thank you for that presentation. Wanted to underscore that the teachers who received this award did this not because they had to, but because they wanted to. And it's, these are hard-won, hard-earned awards that required a lot of sacrifice. And they did it so that they could give the best of themselves to our students. And thank you so much for shining a positive light on our community. The next visitor that our board would like to recognize is our liaison from the LHCEA, Carol Nowakowski. Okay. It's like the community pool, you have to wait for people to get out before you can get in.
Everybody's going to miss all the fun.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Aspire, and Directors. Welcome to the new year, which means new legislative session. I'll wait. As most of us know, Governor Ducey presented his budget last, his opening remarks. And his budget came out on Friday. I will be looking at the document here shortly. Couple of points that I want to make sure you all know is the House Ed meets on Mondays. And the Senate Ed Committee meets on Tuesdays. And with that said, all three of our legislators are on their Ed Committees. So Senator Borelli is on the Ed Committee for the Senate. And then Cobb's and Borelli are still on the House. There is one bill I want to let you know about that I want us to follow would be Senate Bill 1060, which is the Special Education Group B Waits. The focus is on that. And hopefully, growing that weight or increasing it. I know at the Budget Committee, it was discussed, the numbers. And so those are the things that we've always been focused on, is that formula and getting a change. And so hopefully, this is the beginning of that. And then a couple more highlights from Governor Ducey, if I can make this big enough for me to read. He has committed to finishing the 20 by 2020 promise, which will keep teacher salaries of Arizona at or near the levels in the country. He has committed to $38 million to hiring new counselors, which we are receiving three of them. And so I believe at least two, if not three, have all been hired. And let's see here. He has introduced the Project Rocket, which acknowledges that there is a connection to community poverty and learning, which is what we've always been trying to support in understanding that your zip code doesn't define your education. And then, just making sure we are clear on the final totals is, yes, he is, we're getting inflation, the $600 million in education funds. But half of it is inflationary funds that is required by law in fulfilling that 20 by 2020 promise he made in 2018. Which leaves us almost $300 million in actual new funding, which will be put in Arizona at approximately what we would consider now at the 2001 levels. So, and we'll just keep you noted on any other bills that come up. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, noting that with today's approval for our student travel on this agenda, our student travel is 0.47 metric tons of CO2. Yes.
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. I would like to note for in the future, if there's a discussion or some sort of addendum that you would like to put on there, if you wouldn't mind saying that during the discussion instead of bundling it with the vote.
We don't discuss the consent agenda.
I know. And so if you wouldn't mind just keeping your remarks, I did ask if anyone had any remarks. If you wouldn't mind just doing that, just for clarity's sake, so that the vote is only yes, no, or abstain, instead of including remarks with your vote. It's just a trend that I've noticed that I think makes things confusing. It's just a trend that I've noticed that I think makes things confusing.
It's a change in how we do it is what you're asking for. Not just Mrs. Cohen, but traditionally, the votes, we've been allowed to annotate our votes historically.
Explain our votes.
Is that correct? And a remark like that would be considered an explanation instead of additional information?
If you would like me to do it at the end, that would be fine. You could have let me know that before the meeting, though. I've been doing it for almost a year. Oh, over six months.
Okay. I apologize. And by the way, it's not just you, I have noticed it from other people, and I think I did it once too, so I'm not trying to point the finger.
Okay. When would you like me to? Because I would like that noted, and it seems appropriate that it would be noted with the consent agenda, and since we don't have a discussion of the consent agenda, when would you like me to note that?
If I asked for remarks prior to the motion, prior to the motion being seconded, will that be sufficient?
What about Item 7, the informational? We each have an opportunity on Item 7.
We do, but then it's out of context because it's split from the travel, which is what I'm trying to reference, so maybe we should just do all the travel outside of the consent agenda.
We could do that, or I would be open to, as I said, just asking for remarks prior to the vote, not really having a discussion, just if you want to put in sort of your addendum.
Sure.
Does that sound like an okay way to do it?
Sure.
Okay. Again, not pointing the fingers.
Okay.
Okay. We don't have any old business, so we're going to move to new business. Mr. Murray, would you present this item?
Sure. Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the governing board approve the replacement of the Electrical SES Service Interest Section at Lake Havasu High School at a not-to-exceed price of $325,000. The additional funds above the hard bid price will allow for any unforeseen district-requested change orders at that time. Section 3 of the SES unit at Lake Havasu High School failed a couple of years ago. The inability to reset the switch led to a partial day closure of school. The incident required additional assistance from electrical contractors and our electrical provider in order to reset the switch and reestablish power to the campus. Since that time, assessments have been conducted by an engineering firm to determine the best course of action to prevent the possibility of further damage to the switch gear and to avoid the possibility of another campus closure due to the inability to reset the switch. In consulting with General Electric, it was discovered that a replacement switch is no longer available. Conversations have occurred as to the possibility of modifying the existing production switch to conform with our older model SES. The labor and oversight involved in attempting to do so would be expensive, and other underlying discoveries could prevent the unit from being recertified. The failure of this section also raises questions and concerns as to the strength of the remaining sections. The SES has been in place since 1994. A hard bid to replace the SES occurred approximately one year ago. Sam Nichols Electric was the only contractor who submitted a quote. The lead time required to build and ship the unit prevented us from moving forward with the project last summer. The replacement of the unit will take approximately four weeks, making summer the only time for this to occur. Power will be shut down to most of the campus during this time, and high school administration will make the necessary adjustments to work around the partial campus shutdown. Sam Nichols recently provided written confirmation that their quote is still valid as shown in the supporting documents, and this item has been reviewed by purchasing.
I would move we approve 6.1 as presented.
I second.
Is there any discussion or questions?
I note that Dave McGatlin is here representing Sam Nichols, and Dave, people may not know who you are, but Dave has long been associated, why don't you say it, has long been associated with Lake Havasu Schools, have worked with you on different committees and things, very supportive of our school system. So it gives me a lot of pleasure that you're getting this, we don't know yet, but most likely you will get this bid.
Any other discussion? Terry, will you call the vote, please?
John Mastin?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Item 6.2, the discussion and possible action on emergency door lock systems. And this will be presented by Mr. Mastin and Mrs. Asier.
Okay. It is recommended the governing board discuss and possibly take action on deployable emergency lock system for the district. Governing Board Member John Mastin has requested the governing board discuss a quickly deployable additional emergency lock system for use for security in the district. Locks will be used during emergency lockdown situations. The funds for purchasing the additional lock systems would come from community fundraising and donations as opposed to maintenance and operation funds. The approximate cost to equip all classrooms and office doors would be $103,000.
Do I have a motion on Item 6.2?
Well, I think I'll do that.
That makes sense.
I'll second that.
So we have some visuals here, or our board has visuals, but can you kind of explain how it's different than just a regular locking door?
These are secondary locks. So if you had an intruder, you would want to not only lock the door, but you would also want to have, I'm going to use the word barricade, which is probably not 100% accurate in this case, but a way to stop them if they were to be able to successfully kick a lock open. I've got, we've got three examples on here. Some work in conjunction with the hinge. One is an additional piece of equipment actually attached to the door latch. And the one that I think is probably the most beneficial is something that was actually developed by a high school student, believe it or not. It's called a, its generic term is called a Justin Case, because the student's name was Justin Case. But basically what this does is it slides under the door. You open it up left and right. There's a piece that comes up that bars the door shut, and then there's a set pin that goes in that actually performs securing it left and right.
So I see a lot of different types here. Is your recommendation that we buy just the Justin lock, or that it will depend upon the type of door?
I would think that what we would want to do is we would want to leave it up to the discretion of the administration in this case. Again, my preference is the Justin Case system, but over the hinge, there are some that go at the base of the door that require a hole being drilled into the concrete and a plate being placed there that just slide down and in. And the reason why I say we should leave it up to the discretion is the other component to this is the fire marshal. So we want to make sure that we're complying with fire marshal ADA and so on and what we put in.
I noticed that some of these locks vary in price from like $249 to $219. Here's an extra lock for $15.
Right.
And here's one for, right now, there's a special price of $50.
Well, the one you're looking at for 50, you would actually need two to three of those to secure a door.
Okay. Well, my question is, I notice we're going to pay for this with community, with donations and that kind of thing.
Correct.
So what if a teacher decided that he wanted to go ahead and just get the lock and pay for it? Is there any kind of procedure that developed that will allow that to happen and so they can go ahead and, we can start getting that done? In other words, just like a donation you're making yourself?
Correct. Mr. Murray can probably handle that question.
Okay, good.
That, I'm not saying that that can't be done, but it becomes a little bit more tricky as far as being able to document the revenues received and then the outgoing expense. I'd have to run that by the auditors to see how they would want that to happen, or if it can happen, so we don't trigger any type of an exception.
I understand. But I mean, I can anticipate that coming up. If I were a teacher, I would want to get this done.
The other concern that I would express is, one of the things we've tried to discourage is people just picking things and choosing them to include in our classrooms, because we do have to have a minimum standard, we need to make sure that the fire marshal reviews, et cetera. And so my recommendation would be that if, number one, that the board recommend a particular system. The concern that I have about the, and I'll share just briefly, is the one that goes on the hinge, because you have to have a minimum of two to be effective, and the second one has to be the top hinge, that would preclude them being able to be reached by many of our students. The other thing is if you look, for example, at these doors, we don't have indoor hinges on these doors, and so that would only work in certain classrooms. Having some consistency, so no matter what classroom a kid goes into, there's the same system, helps make it more safe and more likely to be used. And then the deadbolt system is quite expensive, and again, we would need to make sure it's used for acceptable with the fire marshal, because it is a permanent installation. So those were just some things that I would think about. But back to your question, Mrs. Cox, if somebody wanted one of these in their classroom and we decided on it, they could either buy it and donate it to the district, or contribute and get it through the donation fund.
So my question is, and I do like the Barracuda one, because it seems like that would work on every single door in our district, but my question is, it seems like a pretty important basic function of the school district for safety, so why would we be looking to the community to donate versus building this into a budget? That would be my question.
I kind of looked at this, and the first thing is, is that the district does not have a budget built for this at this point in time. These would be additional funds.
Right.
The second thing that we run up against is we're just about ready to spend 1.5, 1.7 million in school renovations between all the campuses, Mr. Murray?
We're still waiting on drawings for that, but some campuses will have obviously more renovations than others.
So I look at that, and we're retargeting some bond funds to do that, and hoping that the School Facilities Board will be favorable to us in the coming years so that we can recoup that. Next thing is, is that for as much as the total ask is, when you start talking about $150 to secure a classroom, I think it's a really low threshold. I think if you went out to the community and you asked, you know, could you give us, you know, $50 to help secure a classroom, I think it's a really low bar to get over for a lot of people in town, and I think that the dominos would fall relatively quick. I've had initial conversations with one of the Rotary Clubs here in town, and the thought with the Rotary Clubs is there's enough in their next budget year, which would be over the summer, to do the entire high school. Just get it done. So in the grand scheme of things, I think that the ask to the community for something like this is not out of the scope of reason. It's a board ask as well, it's a district-wide ask and not, we're not looking for a marquee, we're looking for something that's child safety. So it's a little different style.
That's my precise point.
Right.
So as much as we go to the community and ask them for things, it seems like this would be something that the district would handle. Like, I just feel like we shouldn't be going to the community saying, "We really want to keep our kids safe in case of an emergency," is, now it's going to be seen as, you know, the continual ask. Now we're not asking for special, above and beyond things, we're asking for the very basic essentials, which we did when we asked for the bond money. Like, I think this is important, I really do. I just think that we should pay for it and we should work it. I know there's not a budget for it, that's why I said, why wouldn't we build it into a budget? Why wouldn't we look to do that? I mean, I like that you're thinking, you know, outside the box, so to speak, but I just think that the district should be responsible for this, especially since it's such a low cost, you know, for a district-wide safety feature that shuts down the doors. Then it could be uniform in every, on every door throughout the school, and we wouldn't have to go to the community. At some point, the community might get tired of us coming to them.
Don't discount that at all. Again, though, I just see this as one of the, one of the ways that we can do it, and my thought process is that it needs to be done. We can start this tomorrow if we approve it tonight, type of a thing, and we don't have to necessarily wait on a budgetary process to move it forward.
I have a suggestion. On page, I don't know what page it is, but it's the, it's the second page, it's the third page of the material that you found for us on the locks. And I see that this one product gets only one star out of five. Now, that may only be pertaining to one of these locks, I don't know, but what I would suggest is, why don't we try, go ahead and get some and try them? I'm telling you, this is exactly the kind of thing that has unintended consequences that nobody expected. And let's just pick a school, you don't have to do all of the classrooms, and just pick some classrooms and try it, and then see how it worked. We might not like it. But that's how I tend to do things, is especially when it's an enormous expense like this.
I just want to point out that the one-star review is for the safety measure that we're not really that interested in.
Okay, well, I know, but I didn't see any, I mean, if the star hadn't been there, I would still believe this is a brand-new product for us, it's a brand-new concept, and we've all done that before, and it just wasn't what we thought it was going to be.
Yes.
Or it created new problems that we hadn't anticipated, and now we have to solve those problems.
Actually, I'll point out that the star rating is zero out of five, but the reason why it's zero out of five is five-star reviews are zero, four-star reviews are zero, three-star reviews are zero, two-stars reviews are zero, and one-star reviews are zero.
There's no reviews.
There's been no reviews on the product, that's why you see that.
Okay. All right.
I do see your overall point, though.
But I still go back to my other point is, I would go, because otherwise, we're going to wait a long time anyway to get the money to do this, and we're going to have to wait and have time to do it, and personnel to install it, and why not just try it out someplace in different types of doors and situations and see before we spend the rest of this money and do this. Anyway, that's just me.
Is it possible to order one before the next meeting and then?
Well, I don't know that one would do, I mean.
Oh, I know one will not do it.
Some types, some different types.
My recommendation would be that we look at the Barracuda or the Justin Case-style system, and the reasoning behind that is where it's been deployed, it actually gets stellar reviews.
Are all of our doors inward-swinging?
No.
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 So I would like to act on this, but I don't think we have enough information, although I appreciate you bringing it, but I would like to know what it is that we need before we vote to do anything, and maybe it would be good to have some examples for inward-swinging doors and what are we going to do for outward-swinging doors. And then maybe also, Mr. Murray can speak with the fire marshal to understand what the implications are in that respect, and then we would have a better idea on true price. But I would like to do all that as quickly as possible since we're heading into the budgets talk next week. I mean, I wouldn't want to wait until next year's budget, so I don't know.
Well, a lot of what has been discussed is very easy to go ahead and execute.
Okay.
I think what I was holding back on as far as the district level was just this discussion to see if indeed we were going to go out and wait for community funds, what kind of locking system was preferred, but we can definitely purchase a couple of options and try it out. I would agree that based on what I've reviewed in years past, that this Barracuda-type system seems to be the most highly rated, just kind of consistently across the board, maybe not necessarily this same brand, but the same type of a system.
We built some extra money into this as well, passed the highest cost on here, correct?
Correct. We allowed for, you know, unknown freight expenses and taxes, so it's an inflated amount. And also, we're not exactly sure on the total number of doors. We have a really good estimate as all the sites have reported, but, you know, and any time we're installing something like this, there may be another door that's discovered and, you know, hey, this would be really good to put on this door as well, because we do have kids in here from time to time.
Sure.
And then there may be doors that were accounted for that we really don't need them on there when we go to install them.
Do you anticipate the FSPs installing them, or somebody from the district office?
Well, these, the units are portable, so... Well, the units are portable, so, yeah, they'll, depending on what it comes with, we'll just have to see. We'll have to see what comes in the box and how they would be mounted. The main objective, I think, is so that they stay in place, so they don't walk off, because when there is an emergency, you want to know right where it is at all times, and you don't have to go find it somewhere. So that's something that will be definitely part of this discussion.
So there's nothing to install until the incident, it's an incident occurs, and then the teacher would put it in place at that moment?
Right, they would deploy it under the door and slide everything into place. Now, the question would be, does it come with some type of, when you're not using it hardware, to mount it to the side of the door frame or in a place that you could actually readily access it? And if it doesn't, then, you know, we as a district have modified things so that we can make sure that it's where it needs to be so no one's searching for it at a time of need.
So what do you think about postponing this discussion for one month, and then maybe we could order a sample of the ones that we're looking at and consult with the fire marshal and make sure that it would be compliant?
I have no doubt that our.
And then come back to it in February?
I have no doubt if we approved this tonight that our community would pay for it. I just think that we should consider paying for it ourselves, that's all. I really do. I know that you could probably raise all that money all on your own, but I think that's probably a fundamental function of what we do when we consider everything that we do. And I would like to have it for every classroom at the same time, or at least a schedule relative for installation at the same time, so that we don't run into, what I've heard so often in the last five, six years, how come this school or this classroom has something I don't? I would like that to be something that would be deployed for every single teacher, every classroom at a minimum.
So would you be opposed to allowing our community to help defray the cost if they so choose with donations?
Well, I think I've made my point. I mean, I wouldn't vote against that if that's what the board wanted to do, but I would like to see what, I would like to see what the next meeting brings in terms of unanswered questions. How long would it take to install in every classroom?
Mr. Masson, are you?
Depends how complicated the directions are.
And we won't know that till we order it, till next month.
Are you content with postponing it, trying it out or not?
I?
Your item, it's your item on the agenda, that's why I'm asking.
What my thought process is here is that, you know, if we wanted to find budget money internally to do it, okay. But I really look at this as we should get started. And we now know that because we have inward and outward swinging doors, that it's not going to be a one-piece solution. There's going to be more research for the doors that don't swing the right way. So my thought process is that I would like to amend my motion to put it into physically year 21's budget and to start a process of identifying devices.
Well, withdraw my second and second. You're amended motion.
Any further discussion on that? We call the vote, please.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Tom Masson?
Yes.
Nicole Carlin?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes. Item 6.3, the topic is discussion and possible action on family life education programs. And this will be presented by Superintendent Asire.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board discuss and approve the next steps to secure a family life education program or programs. Our policy IHAMB and our regulation IHAMB are the family life education were approved on December 17, 2019 by the governing board. Our policy actually described what we would teach at our various grade levels, and so what we're looking for at this point is direction from the board on what you would like our next steps to be. There are some suggestions there. I would like to note that there are many options. These were just to get the board thinking about some ideas. And, excuse me, numbers four and five are actually, that would happen regardless of which way we go, once the process is done, that there would be a process for board approval for the curriculum, the instructors, et cetera, and following the state process. So we want to make sure we have it in print, that we know what our steps are at the end of the process. So what we're looking for right now is some direction from the board on how you would like us to proceed on developing a curriculum that meets the criteria in our new policy.
I would.
I make a motion we open discussion.
I'll second that.
Well, this is, I don't know how to get this in here. I would still like to have a letter written to our parents that we did not have a program last year, we're not going to have one this year, and let them know. And I don't know where this comes into this discussion, and I don't know that we have to vote on it, but I feel strongly about that. So sometimes I want to put something in, and I should have put it in at the time, it was, the motion was up for the vote, so I didn't get to do something like that. Here's an example. I just need to get this in some way or other. I don't care if it goes into this as a motion, I just want to, I think that's important, that we communicate with our parents.
We had sex ed last year.
Yes, we did. And I agree with your point that communication with the parents is important, but we don't really have anything concrete to communicate yet because we haven't decided that we're not going to have one this year. There might be some form that we can provide this year, and so I just don't want to put the cart before the horse in that respect.
Well, I understand your point, but we, did the high school do a program last year?
Yes, and they're not, they generally do it, what, March? Is it March or April? So we haven't, we've got a little time in order to notify parents this year, but it would be nice to have something to tell them.
That's fine, but I don't see how we're going to get a high school program placed by March, since we don't have any materials.
I don't disagree with you, but I think the point is that we can, even if we don't do it this year, we have to have something concrete to relate to the parents as to, we didn't get it done this year, but we will be doing it this fall, and then again this spring, you know, something like that. So we have a concrete plan in place.
That's fine, I just don't want this to be forgotten. I'm afraid it would just get forgotten, and I don't know if it requires a motion and a vote by the board or not, but I do feel strongly about this, about this communication to the parents.
I think you're absolutely right about that. We need to know if, because we've created sort of a reliance in some respect where parents are expecting that sex education will be provided because it has been provided in the past. And if that doesn't happen this year, I agree, we need to let people know that. For, just as kind of a general point going forward, I think it might be helpful to break up, we're talking about instruction for grades five, seven, and nine, and so it might be helpful for discussion purposes to talk about one grade at a time. And Superintendent Asire and I were talking about grade five, and she had a recommendation for that.
Yes, actually, I did. And so I did send an email out to the board, and I printed it and didn't bring it in with me, I apologize. But our fifth-grade program is not technically sex education. What it really is is family life education in relation to hygiene and puberty. And so we have used, and not necessarily consistently at all of our schools, but we have used a video that's produced by Procter &amp; Gamble, that's very easily accessed by parents to preview, et cetera, that discusses just exactly those two things, the hygiene and the puberty. And so the question would be is, does the board want to look at something different, or would you want to say, in fifth grade, we're happy with this video, we want to continue that for the time being so that we can at least do something? Excuse me. I would request, though, that the board provide direction that it be actually done with all fifth graders following our policy, unless parents opt out.
I've reviewed.
Or they have to opt in, excuse me, I shouldn't have said that.
Right. I've reviewed both, and, I mean, unless we find something better in the future, but just for this year, I would be fine with that.
I'm fine with the fifth-grade videos, they will be shown separately, though.
Yes, there's a boys and a girls and.
Yeah, there are separate videos for boys and girls, they are shown separately.
I'm good with it as well.
Do we need to vote on that, or since we've had it in place in the past, we just leave it as is?
I.
I think we need to vote on it.
I think we vote.
We can discuss it now, but we can incorporate it into a motion once we get through grades seven and nine, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so grades seven, again, when I was discussing this with Superintendent Asire, her recommendation was that we figure out what we want to do for grade nine, and then kind of double back and figure out what we would like to do in grade seven to prepare them for that. So for grade nine, why don't we discuss that first? And just to start off, my preference would be to direct one of our directors to find a resource that's being used in another district that might be suitable for our district. And that way, we don't have to start something from scratch. We can, you have kind of a template to follow.
Well, maybe we should start with what was objectionable in the, I'm not saying that we should do the, continue doing the current program, the one that we've had, however, if we could identify what was objectionable in that program or what was left out of that program, it would be a good place to start.
I think the problem with that is because it was provided by the Mojave County, or Mojave Department of Health, we wouldn't be able to use their materials.
Right. We're not talking about the topics that we want and don't want. If we look at another school district's program, we would at least have a reference point to start with, with that program. And we would say, we don't want this, we don't want this, and this program has these things, we would just have to get rid of those particular items. Or our program had this, and we really liked it, and this program we're looking at doesn't? It's just a reference point, it's a starting point.
That's kind of what I meant.
Okay, all right.
I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but that said, we should not look at any prepackaged off-the-shelf content in doing that. We want to be, I think, for our community, unique in what we're doing in regards to the topic. I know that Tempe has their own.
Have you ever had a chance to look at that one, or?
I haven't looked at it in depth. Tucson also just went through this and created their own. So there are at least a couple of districts out there in the state that have done an internal process that would give us at least a list of categories to start with, maybe an idea of what curriculum would come out of it. But again, it's got to be something that fits the community and the community standards. I look at this, and it's kind of like obscenity. Obscenity is a community standard. Well, sex ed should be a community standard as well, not because it's obscene, but because you've got to honor where it is you're at and the people that actually provide the funding in what you're doing.
So my preference would be that if we're working backwards, so nine through 12, we were pretty specific about what we wanted to teach, so it seems like we already have, you know, an outline of what we want to teach. You're not going to find many districts that have posted their sex ed curriculum on their website, which is what we intend to do. So we're going to have a difficult time, even if we can get a district to email us their curriculum, it would be purely for, what, verbiage under the topics that we've already agreed that we're going to teach? I'm not sure how to go about that, but I'm fine if you can find that, if you can get that information from other districts, that's great, but they're not going to send you their prepackaged curriculum that they've paid for. You know what I'm saying? I think it's important that we direct Mrs. Asire to do what she feels she needs to do to gather the resources and the experts, but I also want to highlight that that was already provided. And that was provided back last August, and it was provided to the whole board. And there are resources in what I provided for everybody to look at, even though that we had a hard time getting through some of it, or we didn't even get through it, those are outstanding resources, at least to pull content from that we could then go through. I would also encourage there, even though we don't have to do a committee nine to 12, we need a community input on the curriculum before it's presented to the board, because it packed the room, people are concerned, and I just have a hard time with us being able to get this curriculum from any other district. I don't see how we're going to do that, but.
I'm looking at Tucson right now. It's actually posted on their website, their entire curriculum.
Okay, well, that's fantastic, then we can look at that and.
Okay, and maybe as part, because I agree that community input is important, so maybe as, to sort of satisfy that, we could have people, a committee of people, looking through that specific template or another one if we choose, and kind of saying, we do like this, or we don't like that, and come to a consensus that way.
Right.
Is Tempe's on the?
Tucson.
Tucson, Tucson is live, I'm looking at Tempe right now.
Okay, let us know.
If Tucson's is on their website, then they definitely wrote it themselves.
They did.
They did, yeah.
They did.
And I know they were in a revision process, I don't know if they've actually done their revisions or not. I didn't spend a lot of time looking at the Tucson. I think one of the things that I would suggest, if you're looking for my preference, would be to take, first with their permission, their information, and then eliminate the things that we already know don't fit into what we've identified, as opposed to having people starting to go up there and maybe react to. And then take the resources that actually fit and let us do some initial screening, knowing the board discussion, the community discussion, et cetera, and bring it, narrow it even further, and then bring a committee together to say, okay, now, let's look at what we have, what would this look like for our community, what revisions do we want to make, what other resources do we need to include? I suspect that we will find some gaps. There may be some areas that need to have more current information, even within areas that we already know we want, there may be some modifications that need to be made.
Tempe's wasn't readily out, where I could find it in a Google search.
Okay. And then my only other suggestion when it came to the committee is, I would like the initial work to be done internally, you know, with the leadership or whoever's going to work on it internally under you. And then maybe the board could just each have a representative that was interested, that they knew, because we all have constituents that are concerned about it.
Yes.
And then maybe we could all put forth somebody that was willing to participate in that.
I think that's wise, and I think, I also think that your suggestion was very good to have some screening and whittling down before we present it to a committee of community members.
And then we would also want to involve some of our teachers who have expertise in the sciences and in health to.
Sure.
Provide some input first as well.
And that's what I mean by whatever you decide to do internally, yeah.
I have a question about your original recommendation. Number two says you're going to set up a committee to develop these lessons in grades five through seven, and then number three, when it talks about nine through 12, it doesn't mention a committee. Now, are you thinking of combining all of this into one committee, or do you still want two different efforts, and are you going to have a committee for nine through 12 also or not?
Right, so the way that the law reads, there's, at five and seven, there's a committee required to develop the lessons. And so for, although I don't say have a committee, there's no doubt that we would want to have a reciprocal process with the committee before we ever brought anything to the board. So my thought was that our committee would look more like our textbook adoption committee type of a format for that curriculum. Not exactly, but as far as representation, as opposed to, we're going to get together and actually write lessons. So that was the difference there. And these were, again, just ideas, they weren't necessarily the greatest, but they were things to get us started in thinking.
So do you think there will be two committees at some point, then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and then maybe once we've had a chance to look at some of these templates from other districts, maybe that would be, after we talk about the ninth-grade curriculum a little bit, maybe that would be the time to start talking about the seventh grade as well. Because right now, there isn't any program offered at the seventh grade.
Right.
It would be my hope that we would put together fifth and ninth, and then look at seventh and try and reverse engineer seventh to the middle.
And the main reason that I recommended that, when we look at things like pregnancy prevention and STD prevention, the depth to which we would address that will be different.
Different.
And I, just in my own view, is the greatest depth that we're going to address it is going to be at the ninth grade. So once we see that, then we can say, from that backtrack. So once we see that, then we can say, "From that, backtrack to what do they need at seventh grade." That isn't going to be quite as, maybe as...
Detailed, maybe?
Detailed is a good word, yes. I kept coming up with graphic or something, it wasn't the right word, it wasn't it. So, yes, detailed is perfect.
Okay.
Well, is there anything that we need to change in the language that you presented? Or could I make a motion?
I'll make a motion if...
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we continue with the current grade five curriculum this year, and that we instruct district administration to identify possible resources and experts to develop the sex ed lessons for grade nine and 12. Nine through 12.
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? Are you ready to vote?
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
December Wong?
Yes. Item 6.4, Approval of E-Rate Wi-Fi and Network Improvement Project. And this will be presented by Jamie Festa-Dagel.
Madam President and Governing Board, it's recommended that the Governing Board approve the E-Rate Plan to complete Wi-Fi expansion via installation of wireless access points and network switches, and purchase of additional equipment racks from a state-approved, selected purchasing cooperative at a cost of no more than $80,000 to be paid out of bond funds. Wireless capability has come about, has become an area of concern for schools across the district as mobile laptop labs and other wireless technologies are increasing. Routers that are currently in use are difficult to connect to, unreliable, and not suited for our environment. Enterprise-level access points will allow for a single wireless ID and password throughout the school. This will reduce class setup time while increasing internet access speeds, control of equipment, and mesh connectivity, with improved separations of guest and staff access. The proposed access points will also allow for an increased number of simultaneous connections without compromising the quality of service, and will improve uptime by eliminating current single-point-of-failure issues. Switches will be installed and racks purchased to support network expansion and proper organization of technology storage areas. Phase two of the bond project includes $162,500,000, $162,500,000 in funding for Wi-Fi at Thunderbolt. It was included in phase two of the bond. This project will provide new Wi-Fi network at Thunderbolt and at our six elementary sites. Wi-Fi and network expansion are eligible for E-Rate funding, and LHUSD will contribute 20%. E-Rate federal funding will contribute the other 80%. LHUSD will work with Yavapai County Education Service Agency and Frank Vanderhorst, our E-Rate consultant, to submit the application to E-Rate, procure services and equipment through an approved contractor, and submit appropriate paperwork. If approved, this project is slated to be completed before the start of the 2021 school year. Once the FCC has approved the project for E-Rate, LHUSD will select a state-contracted vendor and return to the board for approval of work. Total project cost is not to exceed $320,000, $320,000, and no more than $80,000 is to be paid by LHUSD out of bond funds. This has been reviewed by the Purchasing Department.
I move we approve 6.4 as presented.
Can I second?
Any discussion or questions?
Couple of questions. So, is this 5G compatible? Is this whole expansion 5G compatible?
What, I'm sorry, what compatible?
5G versus 4G.
You're actually conflating two different...
Okay. So this doesn't have anything to do with 5G, maybe I asked the question wrong?
No, okay, it's a good question. So, there's 5 megahertz, which is what we're proposing, and a 2.4 megahertz, which is something completely different from cellular. Cellular is more what you're referring to, which would be 5G.
And would you mind introducing yourself, I'm sorry?
Sorry, my name's Sean Baker, I'm the supervisor for tech here at the district.
Thank you.
So, so you're going to a 5 gigahertz network?
We're going to a dual network.
Okay.
So it's backwards compatible and forward.
I was going to say, a lot of, a lot of the devices that our students would bring are probably not up to a 5 gig.
Yep, you're right.
How long will this one last?
How long will it last?
Yeah, how long?
It's a good question. Hopefully, at least five years, or more, so... Well, if I could use as an example, the 2.4 gigahertz has been around for a very long time. John, what would you say, 10 years or more?
Wireless 99 to 2001, somewhere in there, is when the standard came online, on the B-level standard.
Yeah, so it's, that's a good example, and we're moving away from that into the newer 5 gigahertz. If you look right above you here, this nice little circle with the blue light on it is an example of one of the ones that we're moving to. And what's nice about it is they're no longer just out in the open, they're just, they're going to be mounted into the ceiling. So, and they'll be centrally managed, which is exactly what we need here at the district, is we need more central management. The existing devices, I brought some show and tell with me, but I won't take too much of your time. But the old systems, just kind of give a quick example, I think Jamie had asked me to do this, which is, I'll take a moment of your time. The old systems would handle simultaneously about 30 connections pretty well, without really giving up a lot of loss in speed. But these newer style, the ones in this room, is actually a high-density unit. It can handle up to 1,000 connections simultaneously, and actually has four radios inside of it, as opposed to just one. So it's a huge improvement over where we've been. And today, we're seeing more than ever, mobile devices coming in, not just with students, but we're introducing them to the environment in a higher number than we have in the past. And it gives us flexibility, because instead of just putting wires into the walls and dropping them every time we need a new connection, we can start leveraging this system to use wireless for computers there inside the rooms, so...
So, now, am I correct? E-Rate, we have the benefit of E-Rate because of an act of Congress? So, is there ever, does Congress ever talk about, "Okay, been there, done that, we're not doing that anymore"? Or have you, do you hear any rumors, or any talk about that, Sean?
It's actually on your tax, on your phone bill. There's a portion of the tax section of your phone bill.
I see, that's what it is.
And that's what actually funds this.
Okay, so Congress doesn't really have to find the funds to do it, because we're doing it.
No, no, you're being taxed, yes.
Okay, alright, I'm okay with that.
I would share, Mrs. Cox, that E-Rate used to fund hardware and connections, and very much was in, was the hard stuff. And they did change their direction to connectivity, I think it might have been about five years ago. And so the types of things that were being funded by E-Rate were different. So they do update the E-Rate and modify that.
I'm happy, I'm happy to make my contribution.
And these are all AC units?
AC, meaning?
The technology standard is AC?
AC, yeah, these are actually, this is an AC HD, and then dealing with pros.
Right, right, but the AC wireless technology is capable of over a gigabit of throughput for a single device. So this is, to put it in perspective, if you were to put a computer in and you ran that line to it, most commonly now, you're connecting it a gigabit on a hardwire, and the modern wireless will give you that type of performance as well.
So I guess it's important for us to have this, because then, maybe in the future, everybody will understand what the heck you're talking about.
Well, this is the type of thing that should go on and just work.
Okay, so I was confused on the whole 5G thing, but it's similar. Am I correct? I mean, we're going from 30 connections to 1,000 connections, jumping from 2.4 to 5 megahertz. And then, and this is from my own knowledge, so correct me if I'm wrong. And then the jump from 4G to 5G is very similar. You're jumping from like cellular data going through something this small to a massive tunnel that a car can go through.
It's a good basic analogy, yeah.
It's kind of...
It's probably going from LTE to 5G. This is very, is what I'd say, you know, it's just literally double the capacity.
Okay.
That's four, but we're talking more about the megahertz that it actually uses. The reason they go to that is because there's less interference on those channels. And so, one of the nice things about this system is, once it goes up, it can actually scan the environment and tell you what's there. And so that's the first thing we do, we put them up, is we look to see what's creating interference. And if we find things that are our equipment, because I can't really go out to the neighbor and say, "Hey, can you turn yours down a little bit?" But I certainly can go find them in rooms, maybe where they're currently unknown, or maybe they've been introduced to the environment incorrectly, and then remove those from the environment, so that way improve the performance of these. Yeah, so, no, to your point, absolutely, it's literally doubling the performance inside the district. So I did a quick test, just while we're sitting here. Now, this particular one only has 14 clients, or 14 devices associated with it right now, but I was able to pull down almost 700 megahertz, or 700 megs, excuse me, to my phone. So that's really good, so that's almost one gig at that point, which is exceptional. And the district's maximum right now is one gig. So that's good, through the air. So, any interference that's going on, it's doing that. Now, if I were to hook up an older access point to it, I'd be lucky to probably get about 100 right in there, maybe 150 on a good day. So, so literally six times the performance.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, and it's mobile, manageable. So my team can actually manage it on the go.
Very nice.
So we don't have to go out to the access point, we can reset them remotely. I can give you a quick demonstration if you want.
What's the, what's your UBI NT password?
I'll tell you later. Here, watch, we're in the boardroom. She's talking to me, see?
Thank you, and I noticed too late that you were listed as one of the presenters, so thank you. You are technical, technology supervisor for our district?
That's correct, I'm sorry, I'm walking away from your mic.
That's okay, thank you, Mr. Baker.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes. Item 6.5, Approval of Voucher Student Activity Funds and Auxiliary Funds. Mr. Murray, will you present, please?
Yes, thank you. Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the board approve vouchers for December of 2019, and student activity funds for K-12 for November of 2019. And you can see also the auxiliary funds for November of 2019. Auxiliary reports for each school will be emailed to the board, or were emailed to you prior.
I move we approve 6.5 as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Ora Grande has a negative balance?
You said that last month. Yes, Ora Grande, and I wrote it here because I figured you would ask.
Does that have anything to do with shirts, or?
Nothing to do with shirts.
Nothing to do with shirts.
So last month, in October, Ora Grande was at a negative $4,447.10, and you can see they're moving in the right direction, because they're selling more t-shirts, which is good. And again, that had to do with, just for those in the room who may not have been here last month, that had to do with Ora Grande changing to the Ora Grande Classical Academy, which then required new shirts with new logos. So they had to make that one-time investment at the beginning of the school year.
Any other discussion?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Nasten?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes. Okay, we have an informational item from Superintendent, or, we do not... Yes, we do, I'm sorry, from Superintendent Asire.
Thank you. I would like to, again, and particularly because Mrs. Cohen talks about what we go out to the community for, is highlight our gifts and donations, again, for this last month. Thinking at a time in December, when it was, you know, tight for families, they're taking care of all kinds of other things, we had over $20,000 worth of donations to our district. And our community does support many things, many of our schools, in areas that we really can't provide that as a high priority for our district, so appreciate that very much. We also have some information that is provided to you from Educational Services and Personnel. I would like to share with the board, as a part of the update tonight, that one of the things that we committed to when the board did the adoption for Singapore Math was that ongoing training and support. And so we have set aside some days in May and June for follow-up training. We'll be doing that in, I believe, the Singapore or the June dates. It will be specific for the elementary schools by grade spans, so they'll get a little bit more deeper content training. And we do know that the adoption of that new program is, it's a three-year process. They're not going to get it right when they're first learning it, and so we want to keep that follow-up and that commitment. We appreciate the commitment from the board to do so. The other thing that we are working on is our English Language Arts Standards Committee meets this week. We will be expanding that to social studies, science, and math in March, I believe it is. And then we do have some days set aside this summer and May to work on that, with those groups as well. And so, I'm pretty pleased with the work that's happening in the form of Instructional and Educational Services, from that standpoint. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that I had a meeting with the mayor and city manager last week, and they are asking, this may be worded agenda item, but they're asking if the city may come and do a presentation at the beginning of the meeting regarding the 2020 census for the February meeting. The census has a huge impact for our city, as you all know. And I know there are positives and negatives about the census, we have had those kinds of responses to it. But for us, it is critical to many of the areas that we get funded by having those counts for federal funding. One of the things that they pointed out, which I hadn't necessarily thought about, but for example, we have school resource officers that are funded by the city, but those dollars are tied to the taxes that we get back from the state to fund those resources. So not only do we have direct impact, but we have indirect impact from the census, so... I did, since it was the mayor who asked me, I didn't tell him no, I told him that they could present. I'm not sure he will present, but they will be providing some brief information to the board at the February meeting.
And that would be during the recognition of visitors?
Yes, at the beginning of the meeting, so... The other thing that I wanted to share is that our new elementary counselors, one of them showed here today, one starts on Monday next week, and we did have our first meeting today, so that's off and running, and very excited to have those counselors at the elementary schools, so...
Any other information from directors or board members?
I have a couple of things. First, since Ora Grande has represented this evening, congratulations to the Mighty Million team. Great write-up in the newspaper today, I didn't even know that that was starting, so, woo, that's great. And the reason I was questioning about the 5G is because, you know, I'm reading something new about, bless you, the 5G and quantum supremacy, and the race between the United States and China for this quantum supremacy, and... So, and I got into a little bit of a back and forth with one of our legislators today, who will remain nameless, about assessments. And I'm not sure that we're having this conversation in, around STEM, having to do with how important it is, I know a lot of people understand this, but I'm just starting to, how important the tech field is, how much things are going to change in the next 10 years. It's not even going to be the same world that we're living in now. And this is why there's this big push for STEM and this quantum supremacy. And then, all of a sudden, I find out that Google reached quantum supremacy. Did anybody know that? They did? Okay, well, I didn't, and it wasn't anywhere, you know, public, you had to go looking for it.
What does it mean?
Well, it means that they built a supercomputer that calculated something that the next biggest supercomputer would take 10,000 years to calculate, they did in 200 seconds.
Okay.
So, that is, now I'm understanding more about why the STEM race, but here, we don't have people that are understanding this, that are actually trying to make decisions without consulting their district. So if anybody is in contact with our legislators, I would encourage them to encourage our legislators to talk with our leadership, meaning, not me, because clearly I'm a poor communicator, but with our superintendent, or our finance director, or human resources, or Mrs. Volter, or Mr. Gardner. Because when you make decisions about things that you've done no research on, our kids and our country could pay the price, so... I wanted to make that really clear, because I know that this is a heavy legislative season, and like Ms. Malkowski said, we've got legislator, all three of our legislators are sitting in education committees, so it'd be nice for us to know what they're proposing before they're proposing it. I also wanted to thank Mrs. Asire and everybody who replied to my question about what we're doing for Martin Luther King and Black History Month, and I appreciate all the feedback. And I appreciate all the feedback. I'll have questions, but I'll email those because I don't know who the responses came from.
And I just summarized a few, so...
Yeah. Otherwise, I would have emailed them. But I would encourage anybody who is looking to, and I was happy to see somebody had mentioned, "We don't do it just in February. We do it all year long." Because that's been a thing for me, too. It should be weaved in. Black History is American history. Shouldn't be a special month in my mind, but, but anyways, this book, American History in Black and White by David Barton, is a phenomenal book. I mean, it's just such an uplifting book to hear about the people that were right there with our founders that often don't get the recognition. And, and I didn't see any of their names listed in, in those that are being talked about. And then, that was it. I, oh, no, I have one more question. I'm sorry. So, last year, I gave everybody a copy. I was going to purchase this book for everybody. Mr. Hawkins wrote this book, or co-authored this book. It's called Political Correctness: A Deceptive and Dangerous Worldview. It's Pedigree, History, and Practices, edited by William S. Lind and Richard W. Hawkins. And so I went to purchase a copy for everybody, and he gave them to me for free because I got mine on Amazon. And he asked me recently, because I'm taking the Truth Project for the fifth year in a row, if anybody had read any. So I said I would ask if anybody had read any portion of his book. So I'm just asking. You don't have to answer. I'm just asking because I know everybody got a copy.
Okay.
So, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, oh, may I have?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to remind all of you, as you are getting your 2019 taxes together, not to forget the tax credit. You still have to pay your Arizona taxes, but if you take advantage of the tax credit, then that money goes here rather than down to the state for them to spend however they want to. And a lot of people don't realize that if you, you can use the tax credit, you can do it right now for 2019, or you can choose to apply it next year, 2020. But that's a nice little choice to have. If you didn't make your tax credit yet for 2019, even though it's January, you can still do it. Or you can do it and apply it to 2020. Is that correct, Mr. Murray? I thought it was. So, don't forget. There it is.
Yes.
That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I might say something again next month, too.
That's okay. It's a good reminder. Mrs. Fleming, do we have any calls to the public?
No, we do not.
Okay. Any communication needs, or, I'm sorry, any suggestions from the board for a future agenda item? Okay, hearing none?
I'm sorry. I have, I have a question. Normally, aren't we place our students in internships without necessarily having board approval for that? And since the presentation today, I was curious whether the board wanted to have any more information or discussion around that program on the next agenda.
So, the presenters referred to it as a blessing from the board, but it needs to be official approval. Is that right? Or it can be...
I don't believe it is.
Because it takes place during the summer, it does not have to be approved?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be approved, but again, because of the reference, I wasn't sure if we were always expecting an agenda item for approval or not.
We've, we've actually got the chambers program as well, that, that we have, and that never came.
That's not paid, though.
Actually, the chamber pays them.
That's true. I apologize. That's not credit.
Right, right. So, so we, we have other internship opportunities past this one.
So I'm hearing that. I'm okay. Yeah, thank you.
But it would be nice if the program gets going and time goes by.
Write updates?
Some updates, something. I would enjoy that.
So there's nothing further that our board would need to do, that they would take care of the communication and... Any communications or questions from the press?
Oh.
Darn. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
John Nasten?
Maybe, yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Lisa Romano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.